For repeater in a tower. That's something the other communities that we work with, Madbury and Barrington, are moving forward with. But to put it into our plan, it's going to just take us a little bit more time. We have horrendous radios in this area for our town. We work with UNH dispatch and they do have a repeater on Williamson Tower and it does cover some of the town, but the south side of town for us is awful on our portals. So that's something that we're looking at. Each year I do go over the CIP and kind of see where we're at within the department. As the department changes, I think we had to continue looking at the CIP and the apparatus that we have. And something that I wanted to do was Engine Two, if you look, that was purchased in 2005. Working with Bob, I'd like to move that to 2027. And the cost is $800,000 because I'd like to have that combined with the rescue. So right now, our rescue is second due to car accidents and Engine Two is our first due to car accidents. Engine Two does a lot more than that, but by combining those trucks, I think we can save on costs. The rescue was awarded to the town with a FEMA grant in, I forget what year, 2002 maybe? So just looking at the wear and tear of the vehicles and stuff, I thought it would be better for us and the way we have staffing to combine those two trucks to hopefully save money for the town. And then looking at the CIP this year, something I'd like to do as well is, our utility one truck that we have now is the Ford F-550, it's a dually. It can tow the trailers, it's our forestry truck, we were using it on all of our medicals. We've now changed our structure, so Engine Two goes to all the medicals instead. And that way, as we change the staffing levels, we have two people on 24/7. They're in Engine Two all the time so that they're ready for any call that they get. Before, we were responding with utility one if we were out on a medical call, which does happen. I think the average is about 50 calls a year. We have back-to-back calls or calls that happen at the same time. They would have to respond back to the fire station to grab the right piece of apparatus. Now responding with Engine Two, they can handle any calls. So the trucks changed, the uses changed, so what we'd like to do is, the utility truck, just buy a pickup truck. We do have many uses for it. With Assistant Fire Chief, he's been doing the inspections in town. He can use that vehicle to go do the inspections, we do it at the transfer station all the time. A big thing that we're seeing in the fire service is that fires, instead of putting the gear back into the engine, we're bagging it up and putting it in the compartments, but our compartments are getting full. So we would send the utility truck after the fire to go pick up all the gear so that the contaminated gear wasn't in the cab with the firefighters anymore. We put it in the back of the pickup truck. So that price of $38,000 is lettered with a new vehicle, a radio and lights. Just a basic pickup truck. The other money that we were going to use for utility one, because we were going to replace utility one with another 550 in the future, but what I'd like to do with the rest of the money is take our utility two, which is a 2002 Ford F-350, and refurbish that into a forestry truck and make that forestry only. That's kind of been our pickup truck. That's changed its jobs over the years. That was much like utility one, it had the skid unit in the back, that was our forestry truck. We went to medicals in it, but we would just like to make that strictly a forestry truck. The truck's a great truck, good engine, the body, the utility body is rusting, so we have a lot of problems with that. So we'd replace that with a flatbed. And then we replaced the pump and the forestry tank that we have on there now. And by doing that, we're actually cheaper than buying the new utility, the F-550 that we're looking to in the future.
So Chief, what makes it a forestry truck? I mean, it's a four-wheel drive, it's got a water tank on a hose and a nozzle.
So that truck, our utility one now, we use that as a forestry truck. It's got what we call a skid unit, so it has a tank in the back of the pickup truck with a pump. Pump that we have now is 500 gallons per minute. We have forestry hose that's in that vehicle, we have a lot of forestry tools. There's specific things to forestry that's just on that truck.
Okay, but it's not really, I mean, you're almost there, right?
Yeah, we have everything. You know, we just want to upgrade a lot of stuff. The pump that's on that truck, I think, I'm trying to get some history on it, but I think it's well older than 2002. I think we took it from old SH1 way back in the day, so that pump's been around for a while. And we've been having a lot of issues with it. We just had to replace some of the plumbing on it because it broke. So just upgrade everything, get a bigger tank. The tank we have now is only 150 gallons, so we looked at like a 250 gallon tank. So just upgrading and refurbishing that whole truck and just making that a forestry. And it will definitely get used, but not used as much as utility one because now the way we're staffing everything and the way we're using our equipment, I think that truck we could use for another 20 years easily, just as a forestry.
So we'll go up at the same time again?
Correct. And by doing this, if we just, you know, the utility turns into just really a pickup truck and utility two turns into the forestry, we're saving money from the old plan of just having, replacing utility one.
Great.
Questions?
Engine One, are you turning that in or are you getting anything back from that? Are you trading it in or what's the?
We are trading that in.
Is the price up there with the trade-in or without the trade-in?
Without the trade-in. We're working on that with the company.
So how much do you think?
50.
Maybe?
And I was just told the body is getting done now. They're working on the body of the truck now.
Jeff said you guys going out to Wisconsin, lovely Wisconsin.
Yep.
What, January or February?
Jeff will be going out with a couple of people in January to look over the truck to see where it's at right now. And then I'll be going out for the final inspection in March. Which the final inspection and the trip that Jeff's going to take is probably going to be, for him, a full day at the shop going over the truck. You set a huge table and literally go, you know, front to back through all the paperwork. And what's nice about there, because I went with the tanker, the people that are building the truck are right there with you. So if you have any questions, you know, they'll come right in and work with you.
Well, you'll both have done the same thing, so you'll know everything inside.
Yep. Yeah, the offer on the RFP for the truck was 25, but they're still working on it. Looking at, you know, there's some of the equipment that we're going to trade in because we're getting new equipment with the new truck, so they're working on that price right now.
This 650 that's listed is what was voted on?
I'm just, what I'm looking at is in terms of how much we need to put in each year?
Right.
Because that's what the ABC is looking at at the moment, so.
It'll come down just a little bit.
It's still up there, so.
So yeah, this one for me, it's really, each year I do take a look at the overall CIP and see kind of where the department's at. Like I said, I mean, two years ago, the staffing levels was completely different. We were handling calls in a completely different way. But we just purchased the air packs, the SCBA's. That was a huge help, so we're definitely getting through it.
And item number four, the radio, where would the tower go?
Hopefully done by the race truck. There's currently a tower down there across.
Oh, across the road?
Yep, across the road. And.
So there's an operating cost associated with this as well?
Correct. But it depends on what route we go as well. So when I took over it as chief, the discussion between Lee, Madbury and Durham, or Lee, Madbury and Barrington, sorry, was ongoing. We decided not to spend any money to not upgrade our side of the things. Barrington did, Madbury doesn't have to because they get coverage from UNH, from that repeater. So we kind of left it how it was. And I've been in endless meetings throughout the last couple of years and we've worked with two-way communications out of Newington and other people to look at the bigger map and to see, they can put on a computer the reach of the tower to show us the whole south side of town isn't covered on portal. So that's where we want to do it. Looking at that tower, it was told to me by a previous chief that there was a planning board meeting when the tower went in, there was approval from the town to use it. That's what a lot of these companies do, they come in and say, hey, if we can throw this tower up, you guys can have the space on the tower. I've worked with Karen endless hours to try and find those meeting minutes. We found them. There was nothing really agreed upon. And trying to get a hold of one of these companies that owns this, you can't do it. I've had previous chief and their lawyers trying to get a hold of the company. I've emailed them, called them, everything, trying to get a hold of them, can't. The town of Barrington is now working with a company, a local company, that's doing a repeater for their highway department. The fire department needs to upgrade theirs, so they're working with them to possibly do the same. So I met with a guy the other day because it's one of those where Barrington can move forward with their project and it's not going to affect us, but at some point it's going to start affecting us because, you know, if we go digital, we're not prepared to do that yet. So we're in discussion with them, meeting with him, he brought up that tower. He kind of seemed like he might be able to hold them, so there's still hope, which would cut down the costs. If we got to put a tower up, obviously it's going to cost more money for us. If we could use that tower, can we use the generator that's on site? Because there is a building there, that would cut costs for us. So it's just the unknown and the $100,000 is for all of that that's unknown. We don't know if we can use the tower, if we're going to have to build our own. We don't know if we can use the generator, we don't know if we can use their building.
What's the year of the planning board meetings, Scott?
I don't. It was years ago. I'd have to ask Karen, Karen will know.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, check correspondence back.
Scott, can I ask you about the thermal imaging camera? Is that a unit cost? $25,401?
That's for three.
I'm sorry?
That's for three. That's based on the most recent purchase.
Okay. I mean, it'd be good if we could put the unit, it says three.
Well, it says three thermal imaging cameras, so you have to do the division.
Well, I mean, if it's three units, then, you know, that's a big difference.
When we, when it first went to CIP, I was hoping to do all three. I work with Bob, we did them all separately. So we did one every couple of years to get the cost down. Within that timeframe, the first two we bought were $12,000 apiece.
Yep.
The recent one, they don't make that camera anymore because technology changes every month. So the recent one that we just bought, I think was $8,900. So that's the new price, but that's for all three of them together right now. So, and then that would be our plan. When we replace the cameras, we replace them all together. Because now, what we didn't want to happen, happened. We have two cameras that are Scott cameras and then we have one camera that's an MSA because they don't make the technology because we waited so long. So that's the goal with that, is buying all three at the same time.
I was just, because I remembered our initial discussion in buying the thermal imaging cameras, and some doubts about it, we'd need them.
Yep.
I'm just wondering how they're holding up relative to reliability.
They're going good right now. And then when we made the purchases for the air packs, a bunch of our air packs have thermal imaging cameras on them as well.
Yep, okay.
So we have that redundancy as well. You know, some, one of the officers can have the camera and then some of the firefighters can have the tech camera on their air packs, so.
Okay, great.
Sorry, I have some problem with my links here, but they were $8,467. $8,467.
Okay. So it's possible that price won't go up as much as I think it's going to go up? Is that what you're saying?
Well, it's based on just this price, this was a 2021 price. And so if you're not replacing it until 2030, and if it escalates at 5%, this is a limitation here. You might actually like to apply an annual cost increase rate individually to each single item. Because it really is the fire equipment, the apparatus that goes up at 5% to 7% per year. And things like thermal imaging cameras, where the electronics just gets better and better.
And it gets more vertical.
Correct. Doesn't really go up at that rate. So it's a question of, is it worth the complication of now saying, okay, we got to put in a separate increase rate for each line item? Or put in a place for an override if you want to override that?
Or do you just make the number even the same?
I mean, in this case, the amount of money that you have to set aside each year is really dominated by the cost of those fire engines and tankers and so forth.
Yeah, because the first two thermal imaging cameras that we bought were $12,000. And then this new one with the same technology is only $84,000.
Right, so that might be one of those, you know, part of the error, whatever, that we're not looking for. Where you can be off in one place and, you know, over one place, under the other.
Yeah, well, when the, basically the 2022 cost, that's up to 2.7 million.
Right.
Thermal imaging cameras, whether they, three of them ends up costing $39,000 or $26,000, it'd be a big difference.
And what is the gear extractor?
It's a commercial washing machine. So with our gear, the following contaminants in it.
Oh, okay.
I purchased a gear extractor a couple of years ago. And what it does, the drum actually almost pulls everything out of the gear. And then I would assume, you know, some typical.
Peace, I remember the discussion when you wanted to first.
Now you know what it is.
Our insurer, Primex, highly recommends having a commercial extractor too.
Especially with everything that's happened in the past, yeah. Does it wear any of the equipment faster or is it going fine?
No, it's made for that. And we've played with all the different cycles and we've talked to the manufacturer and we have the appropriate soap and everything that we're using, so we don't, it doesn't go on a spin cycle, that's too much for it. You know, we've worked with the company and so we know exactly, because we have the outer layer and the inner layer and the inner layer is supposed to be a little bit more delicate than the outer layer, so we found all that out and everything. We haven't had any issues, it hasn't done anything bad to the gear, so.
Excellent, but it's safer, that's wonderful.
All right. Next one?
Next one what?
The pumps and cisterns?
Oh.
Just with the recent discussions, I ended up changing this one this year. So it used to be set up that Elder Osborne cistern repair was going to be done in 2023. Just with all the discussion regarding the sprinkler system for this building, I think a big cost for the sprinkler system, which I'm still working on, is going to be the fire pump and then the water source. And we don't have one here as of yet. So I decided to work with Bob and put the public safety complex cistern in for next year instead of the Elder Osborne cistern repair. We do want to get that fixed on Elder Osborne, but they do have two cisterns currently. We keep up with it and we keep, the top cistern has a leak that we're aware of. We go up there all the time, we fill it up, we try and keep it filled to the top. But we just think that the public safety complex might be the better one to help out with the cost for the sprinkler system. And even if that's something that we don't do next year, the sprinkler system, I think it's excellent to have here, obviously, for water supply. If we set it up correctly, we can use it for training, we can use it to fill the trucks. There's so many different things we can deal with that.
We just have to spell Elder Osborne, right? New U. See, that's why we don't love the name.
I didn't do it.
That's just garbage CIP. Where would you put the cistern itself here? Underground?
Yes, underground. I just don't know where because I know that whole backside is ledge. So that's going to up the cost if we get a blast in it. So we definitely have to look around the property.
Don't forget, I still have an open, an open offer on putting a cistern in on the, on the point and line.
Yep. And then with the discussion that we continue to have, which I wanted to do earlier and change it, but the last one had Lee Hook Road was second, then the center of town was third, and I switched those, so the center of town would get a cistern sooner because of the discussion with the town hall, center and everything. It would be a good location to have one anyways. So the kind of flip-flops of stuff and we rearranged the fiscal year on what we're going to do on, but those are the two big changes.
Great.
So there's one in Elder Osborne, you don't want a center of town, there's no public safety. Is there one in Lee Hook at Early DeMar?
No.
Town Road?
No.
The one near Turner's.
No.
Oh, this.
$100,000 is our new ones.
Oh, okay, so.
Yep, so the last.
So there's no maintenance in this one?
No, we did the maintenance on Riverside Farm Drive. Oh, I'm drawing blanks on everything right now.
But there's no associated cost? Because I know there was some expense in terms of the one, like we did on what, lamprey?
No.
No, it's not lamprey. That one where his house keeps up?
We haven't touched lamprey.
There's like a pond.
Yep, there's a pond there.
But there's costs associated with maintaining those kinds of.
Correct.
But that's not in here?
No, so Riverside Farm Drive, we did fix, and that's a pond. We dredged that, we dredged James Farm and rode off the Kelsey Road.
So shouldn't those be in here at some point? You're going to have to maintain them again, there's a cost.
So that is a maintenance cost and we've done that out of this plan. So yes, if we kept it in the same cycle, that probably would be within 20 years. I think the goal of this plan though is to move away from those because of the reoccurring costs and to place more cisterns in town. A previous chief did a program, worked with the company and they came through, mapped out the whole town to look to see where we needed water source, water supply. And so these, you know, four, five and six were from that plan.
So if you had all of these, then you wouldn't need the fire ponds? Is that what I'm hearing or not?
No, because it's in different areas of the town. We'd have to look at it.
Can I ask you to go back through and look at those fire ponds and see if there's any maintenance that falls within this timeframe?
That question came up with our Public Works Director. And he said his preference would be that they do maintenance annually or semi, or every other year, rather than waiting until it's really bad and then spending a lot of money to fix it.
But I don't know how much that is. If we're going to use that fund for that maintenance, then something I would.
Budget, yeah. A lot of that, a lot of that maintenance is keeping the path clear to the pond. For instance, in the area you're in and we're in, yeah, there's a pond back there. I don't know if it's designated as a fire pond or not, to be honest with you, but there's hardly any access to it.
Well, if you're going to use this fund for any of that maintenance, that needs to be in there. So if you're not, that's fine, but if you are, then it needs to be in there at some point?
When this was discussed before, it was pointed out that the capital reserve fund would not be appropriate for what would be annual maintenance. And what the Public Works Director was talking about, my recollection is it was like $1,000 or $1,500.
That's fine, that's fine.
And something that Public Works Department would do annually.
Okay, that's fine, as long as that's the plan, that's fine. I just remember when we did the one on Earl Gibson's left down there, that was very expensive. So Mr. Bryant, I think, did it, didn't he?
We haven't touched lamprey.
No? Well, it's one that he's, I think it was like $20,000 to fix whatever it was.
Yeah, the Riverside Farm Drive one was $22,000. The last two were a little bit cheaper.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, no, I misunderstood your question. Yeah, you're correct that, I have talked to Steve, we worked on that because when we did James Farm and we did Tamrac, we discussed that. A big part of that is to keep the trees and all the leaves away from it and mowing the area and stuff. And we have discussed that the highway would handle that. Because I said, you know, give us a lawnmower, we'll do it.
Okay, thanks.
This is one of those places where a previous, previous meeting, I pointed out that when you change the timing of some of the items, the effect isn't what you might expect.
Right.
And this is a really good example of it. Up here you can see that the $29,445 that would be needed is something that's needed all the way out to your last item. So all the way out to 2038, which is the last item that you have down here. And it's that total cost of getting to 2038 that is controlling how much you have to set aside. And because of that, there actually is no financial advantage. In fact, there's a disadvantage to just spacing these out like this. And so if this, instead of being out delayed for three years, if you look at the ending balance for 2023, you end with $100,000, well, you've got enough money to do it in 2023. So if you change that to 2023, then instead, instead of having to set aside $29,445, it goes down a little bit. And the reason it goes down a little bit is that we're considering annual cost increase at 2% and the bank is not paying us 2%. So if you have the money in the bank and the annual cost increase is greater than what you can earn in interest and you need the item now, you ought to buy it. There's no advantage to postponing. And you can actually move by a few years or several years, every one of these items except for that last one. And the only thing that happens is the cost actually goes down a little bit.
And you increase safety, right? Because you have better access to water, so that makes a lot of sense, it's important to look at.
Once, once you take this last one and start moving it in.
Then it gets tricky, right?
Then the price goes up.
That's great.
So there isn't, as long as we're in this situation where inflation plus annual real cost increase is significantly greater than interest that's being paid on safe savings, if you have the money and you need it, you ought to spend it and buy what it is you need.
And that might be something important to note in the CIP, Financial Plan, FPT? Yeah, just so that you know, if interest is going up, then that's the time to look at your dates again.
Another way to look at it is, and this is something that probably not going to sit well with the voter, but you could also look at bonding those particular things, just do them all now. Because the rate for those particular things is less than 2%, which is less than even the annual increase. You just get them done and just see, out of the way. Then you're just paying that particular bond off for the next whatever, 20 years, which is about when you're going to do Packers Falls.
Because you have so many other things you need to bond at the same time.
But I think one of the things that's kind of interesting is what John just brought up. Without something like this to show you those particular things, you would not know. You would not know. You'd have to have like people studying this for many, many hours to figure those things out.
That's great.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Is that, that's it for the chief, right?
Totally, yeah.
Simon, you don't get to see as much Elder Osborne, have we fixed that? It's a bummer, we love having evidence.
Oh, and you have to key Jeff into, because I asked him that question about the shiny thing, to get a less shiny truck, cheaper, and he gave me like a blank look, like what the hell are you talking about kind of thing.
Jeff's not really the joker.
Okay, wow. You can fill him in in terms of what I tried to get.
I'm going to make it more shiny now.
Nice.
More shiny, no, less shiny.
Shiny, yes.
More yellow, more shiny.
More yellow, that's what we need.
Yes.
He made some comment about he doesn't pick the color or something.
Yeah, I think there's a little, you know, tension in the color world out there.
Our trucks have been yellow longer than they were ever red. And the best line was, I called, when we did the tanker, we were, we were kind of trying to figure out what we were going to do, if we're going to go to red or yellow. And I called somebody that was retired from the department and they said that they hated the yellow, but it was our yellow.
Yep.
And so we stuck with it.
Well, also.
Love the relationship.
Was it you or somebody mentioned that when you're at a large fire and everybody's there, you can pick out your truck really easy, so you can know where you're.
Yeah, the only communities around, South Berwick has the same color. And Stratford has the same color, that's kind of around us. But most of the time, we're not at fires with them, so it is very easy to pick out our trucks.
Yep.
Sounds good.
Just so you guys know, I did contact a sprinkler company. I am working with them. The flip side of that is that we do need to move out of that room sooner or later because of the exits. So I've been working with the staff to try and relocate into the gym, move some stuff around. I talked to Chief Johnsonfield about it as well. I don't want to put any money into it right now, we're just going to use the armoires as walls for the time being. I'd rather get into the room, see what works, see what we're going to do with location. I'd rather get into the room, see what works, see what we're gonna do with locations of the rooms and stuff before we start putting up walls and spending money.
So the location of that room gives you an exit this way and an exit that way, is that what they're doing?
It, within the room itself, it's got the windows, and it's got two exits out.
Okay.
Each unit would have a window, or sorry, because the tape's still on the floor?
One of the staff members is really taken to it, so he's working on computer programs and stuff, and building walls and setting up tables and. But one of the things is potentially putting three bedrooms along the windows, the window wall. So each room would have their own set of windows, and there, we have to look at things like the helmets. Um, the HVAC systems, returns and all that stuff, because there's a return on the wall that's, would be out of their rooms, so. I've worked with Steve to talk to him about having a HVAC company come in and discussing with us, does each room need a return? Because the way it sets up, um, the incoming air will actually go into each room, because there's enough of them in there, but do we need returns so it doesn't get too hot in there? So.
And you've solved the gender issue?
Well, if they had different rooms.
Yeah, they, we'll have three different rooms.
That's one person to a room, or?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
We'll prob, we'll keep the bunk beds, so.
No.
In a big storm or something like that, we could fit six people easily in there, but everybody, for our shifts, there's only two people per shift. So they'll get their own room separately, and then they'll give us a free room in the middle for anybody else that might need it.
Agreed.
Um, but then having the availability to have more people there for the future if we need to, town.
Um, can I ask you an unrelated question, but kind of related, no, no, okay, I'm gonna ask it.
Okay.
Can you give me your take, because we had the presentation also from McGregor. What's your take on that? They're talking about, you know, refurbishing where there, there used to be, um, but that still doesn't give them enough space. Ultimately, is there some, I don't know, something that we can do, would we ever provide our own ambulance service, or? Can you give me your thoughts on any of, any and all of those particular issues? Uh-oh, he's thinking.
Uh-oh.
He's thinking.
I guess, I get this, I get asked this a lot, because it depends on how you look at the ambulance service. And what part of it you're using, because some people say if you use ambulances, you can make money. Because insurance companies pay you. I'm sure you heard Chris's sides, you know, the other side to it, if they're making money or not. So the concern that I have, if we were to do our own ambulances, is one staff one. There's a lot of departments around here that are trying to make it work with just the two staff members. If you do that, most calls, you're out of town for over an hour, because you're transporting the person to the hospital. The turnaround time from the hospital to get back into town, um, so you're racing back, you might have multiple calls going on, it just takes the crew out, so then. That makes me worried. If we were to do it, I'd ask for another two people per shift, so we'd have four people, so two people could run the ambulances. To the hospital, and we still have two people in town to take care of the town. So there's.
You put McGregor in risk too, now they have less needs, and now everyone's having to scramble for way more employees than.
Well, just wondering, is, I, I, I don't have any problem with their service, and their price is really good, but, you know, things change.
Yeah, and the, the biggest problem we have with emergency medical services, which I was involved in. For quite a period of time with airborne emergency medical services, the biggest problem they have is collection. Is, is accounts receivable, and it runs them into the ground, truly, it runs them into the ground, very difficult to collect. The insurance company pays X amount, maybe, if they support emergency medical, uh, so you can.
My trip to Wentworth cost over a thousand dollars. My trip to Wentworth cost over a thousand dollars.
Is there any possibility that McGregor would put one of their units at our barn?
I don't know, I can't answer that for Chris.
I know that, I know some other communities that I've looked at that have done that, they've gone to the service and said, we're sure on space, we, you know, potential space.
My concern with that is I don't think the other departments would do it. Um, so it's kind of. It potentially would help our town, but they would still have a need in other communities, and I don't know what they would do for that. We have stored one of their ambulances before, but they don't have a crew here, and that's the other side of it, is then we're adding more people that aren't on our department in our building, and we'd have to give them. You know, sleeping quarters as well, and, yep.
Guys, I was just wondering, because he said if, if they actually go from where they are in Martin Hall back into their old building, they only have space for two ambulances.
Correct, yeah.
So I'm thinking if, because they have three, if they stored one here, but I don't know if that helps anything in terms of response time.
So we did that for years, and what that got us was, um, McGregor would allow our members to go to their EMT base, like, uh, EMT classes now for free. And we'd have, you know, if we had a call that was third due in town, their members would respond here, they had to go to get in the building, and they would leave from here. If they have two calls going on in Durham or Madbury, they'd come and grab this one and bring it to Durham, because that's where their headquarters is, so.
That seems like a lot of waste of time.
Yeah.
Do you, do you see any benefit in us having our own ambulance, uh, service, et cetera?
I wanna be Switzerland on this one so bad.
I think that's.
I do and I do, I do and I don't.
Right.
I just, you know, the upfront cost alone for ambulance, to buy the ambulance a hundred thousand dollars, then you get equipped with. You know, we're looking at a monitor right now, and those run forty-five thousand dollars for a monitor, you need the stair chair, you need the A level. Just to outfit the ambulance, let's just say it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which the town has to come up with that. And then to staff it, that's my biggest concern, you cannot have an ambulance and not respond. So that's my concern, the other side of it is we don't have any paramedics, so we're still gonna have to use somebody, so to take away. The responses from McGregor and be like, oh, by the way, can you still give me a paramedic? You know, we, the town would have to pay for that, obviously, like other communities do, but. The business side of that, being like, hey, we're gonna take away all your business, we're gonna get our own ambulance, but we still need your paramedics, or we could use a hospital, the hospitals have medics we can use as well. But then by the side of it is staffing, a lot of fire departments, you know, they'll have the, the medical call, they'll go to the, the hospital, and then you don't, you, your town's not covered anymore, you don't have enough staff. So now you're calling it mutually, and the fire chiefs will only deal with that for so long, because now they're protecting your community. And like Chris probably talked about, the government's paying so much per call, and they're just like, here, here, that's what you get, and that's it. Um, and like you said, just trying to get it back, Chris worked a long time with a lot of the big departments around here, Hampton Fire, Seabrook Fire, they had a committee. And they worked with all those companies to get the money back. Um, because the companies that they had, they were paying a fee, and they weren't getting any money back from them. They weren't, you know, going after the people or trying to figure out the co, the costs and stuff, and they were just. They weren't getting a good contractor or a good service from those companies, and then they finally made a, they, they're paying a little bit more, but they got a better company. And now they have somebody in-house from McGregor that works on that stuff with those companies, so. You know, there's a lot of behind the scenes stuff, the, the upside to it is we can control everything. You know, I can control the staffing, I control the training, I control the equipment, all that stuff, and I understand that, but. I don't wanna say either way.
He also said that there's a lot of people that are volunteers that work there, and that seems to come from that Durham.
So McGregor's, um, they have McGregor Institute too, which they run a lot of EMT classes, and a lot of the students in like kinesiology and stuff.
Right.
Become EMTs, so for them, it's just, they teach the class, and they're like, hey, we have an ambulance service, come to us. Um, so they get a ton of people.
Right, which we wouldn't have that, so there's so many pieces of it.
They probably have eighty people on their roster, and a lot of them are college students. For us, every call we go on, we get a different crew, pretty much. I mean, Monday through Friday, they might kind of have the same people working the same shifts, but a lot of times, we get up a call at nine o'clock in the morning. And at ten o'clock, it's a completely different crew, so if we had any issues that we wanna work on with the first crew, we're gonna have a totally different crew, have a call at one o'clock, it's another crew. So, you know, to get the two departments to work together, me and Chris have worked over the years. To try and do barbecues and play games and do trainings together and all these things, activities to get everybody together, but with the college students, every year, they're getting more and more kids, so. You know, every couple of years, the students are leaving, and then you're getting a new batch.
Because that was my, one of my concerns is his staffing issue, because when he's in the building next to the ROTC building, the student, it's right on campus, so students go. Now he's in Barton Hall, it's a little further away, there is some bus service over there, but it's kind of close. But if they decide, hey, we're, because one of the things he talked about is, um, UNH Police and Fire building a new building someplace? Which is probably not going to be on the UNH's campus, how is he gonna staff it? Are the kids still gonna be, they'll probably have a bus route, but now kids are gonna think, well, geez, now I have to go on the bus, I have to do this, maybe I don't do it.
Yeah, and they have a nice, in the old station, it was very small, but they had a nice lounge, they had a TV for the kids and all that stuff, so. I think a lot more students would go there because it was closed, just kind of get away. Um, and he doesn't have that anymore in that building, so he's got the space, but he's also, he has bunk room issues over there too. He's making rooms into bunk rooms that aren't meant to be bunk rooms, so.
I've seen, well, I haven't seen it after it's been renovated, but I saw it before, and it was like, freaking close.
Okay.
I think you're done.
I don't say.
Unless you wanna stay.
No.
It's a public.
No, I have another meeting, I'll talk to him then.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
So. Right now, we're just back to the financial planning tool, it's a tool itself, and, uh, any of your questions, suggestions, uh?
Well, I'm just, I'm just admiring the resolution on this particular machine.
I'm sorry?
He's commenting on the optics.
Yes, I'm, I'm calling, I'm, I'm just seething with anticipation with the tight, you know, resolution on this particular presentation, because it's so crisp and, you know.
Great.
Okay.
It's something silver to me.
So I was just gonna point out, um, we're looking at, uh, draft version zero point zero seven. I think the last version that you were looking at was, uh, point zero five, um, and since then, uh, point zero six. Added a summation of the annual budget items. Previously, uh, for line items, if they were not going to come from the fund. There, there's a column where you can enter an X to indicate that, um, that the, um, funding was, wasn't planned or, or wasn't going to be, uh, done. On town buildings, you could enter a B to say the fund, the money was gonna come from a bond. And on all of them, um, way back in, uh, REVO three, um, added an A to indicate that it was gonna come from the annual budget. But that wasn't fully implemented, there wasn't anything that then actually added it up. So that was, was new, um, and also there's a new thing that checks the subtotals of. If you add up what's coming from a bond, you add up what's coming from the fund, you add up what's coming from the annual budget, you add up what's not funded. That should add up to the total, so it doesn't, we can show you that. Um, and then REVO seven, uh, made an update to the, which you just saw, fire pond and cisterns. And I also found a mistake in REVO six where, uh, the cell where you entered the annual increase rate was mistakenly locked. Um, so that was fixed.
Can I, can I ask a question? Just, just. The, the, the planning tool, et cetera, I think does a very good job relative to capital items, et cetera, et cetera, and so on. What about, what, what? What about adding? Uh, forecasts on population? What about adding a forecast on, uh, housing, et cetera, et cetera, you know, what, what's it gonna take? I mean, all of those things impact our, our, our operating costs, obviously, if we had in there. If we put in there, you know, here's, here's where we think the growth is, I mean, if we put people in there, and each person who is a tax revenue, whatever, that you could forecast off of. Uh, the same things relative to, as I said, housing or, I mean, you can, you see what I'm getting at, even people. People, employees, if, if we put in there a forecast for X years, every other year, or whatever, for what they think their headcount's gonna be. Uh, you know, whether it's for public works or for the police or whatever, if we put that in there and put a, put a number with it. Would it, I mean, would it kind of help us look at the future and say, well, you know, here's, here's what our growth looks like, how are we gonna respond to it? We gonna, we gonna put a wing on the public safety complex, or, you know, those kinds of things.
It's, that, what you're talking about is capacity planning.
Yeah.
Your capacity, and the thing is, in terms of population, you also need to know in terms of what that population makeup is. You know, how much, how many are the older senior citizens, how many are children?
Well, Stratford County puts out a lot of information relative to that, but I just think it's something that we should roll into our thoughts as we go over these, as capital can, you know.
Maybe that's another tab or something, because there's. Ultimately, as many tabs as we want, but, um, it's something to think about. Because, you know, some of these particular things are driven by how many people, like the fire department thing, you're gonna be adding people, I suspect, in the upcoming years. Because he can't find people to volunteer, so that's a cost, so.
I won't beat this dead horse long, but I know a lot of that information you can get from planning commission.
Yep.
Deerfield, I've used, uh, Southern Hampshire Planning Commission, and they actually gave us a fairly realistic build out for the community based on our zoning regulation and, and based on developable land. Which is a little simpler and blunter instrument to use than digging into the, the demographic details you were talking about. But I think all of these towns in New Hampshire, you know what you've got for open property, you know what's protected, you know what your minimum acreage is, and you can, you can predict. Semi-accurately a build out for your community.
Twelve years on the long range planning committee, and you can look, and the statistics show that numbers aren't growing, so really you can control how much you wanna.
I just think it would be a good thing to put in the, it's a great tool, all for.
I think, I think that's, that's doable, there, it is, the cost though are more than just population. So if you talk to our police and fire department, uh, their number of calls that they go to has been going up faster than the population of late. Um, and our fire chief especially, or police chief especially will point out, is Route four and Route one twenty-five.
Yeah.
Um, so, so you need to factor in with the traffic on, on those two highways, um, and that's.
Well, I proposed at the last meeting, John, I don't know if you remember that, if we'd walk off one twenty-five and four, it should be borders, he should be perfectly happy, so.
So I was gonna show, so the, the re, um, it came up at the last meeting, um, with, actually, I think maybe it came up with a, a SLIPWAD meeting. Um, that with roads and bridges, the Takedo Drive survey, um, rather than coming from the fund, was gonna come from the annual budget. Um, so there's an example where A was entered, um, and now down at the bottom of the spreadsheet. Um, this shows the annual budget and what are, um, the costs associated with that for each year. So this is just the first step at, um, incorporating, uh, budget information, things are gonna come from the budget.
Can you scroll up? That's a one, I'm sorry, can you scroll up?
Yeah.
Do you have the? Where is it? So the hundred and forty-three, five for Chesley, that's with the grant, or is it the next one down? What's the? Isn't that the one that we just got here?
That's the grant.
That would come out of the budget.
So is that why?
So that has been, not been updated.
So, okay, because one of the things that the ABC is looking at is in terms of how much we need to be putting into those particular.
This year.
Trust funds? So it's things like that, if we can clean that up, so we know exactly what it is that we should be putting away.
Because we don't have.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's the big one. So I don't know, how much ti, more time do we have here? I don't know whether people have to leave.
Uh, I'm free.
So I don't know, can maybe, can we do some of the little ones to get them out of the way and then end up on town buildings?
Sure, so, so first, so you want me to get from Steve, um, what, what would our residual cost actually be?
How much will we actually be taking out of this particular reserve?
Okay, I will fa, ask that question and get that, um, new number in.
Okay.
This is just our little, uh, check of nominal subtotals up here.
Yeah.
Um, and this number here should equal this number here, and if it does, it says checking, if it doesn't.
Okay.
It says R.
I like that. Is it in red, it says R, or is it still?
Uh, no, it, it just doesn't, it's black, there's other places where things go red, like if you draw the.
Well, I want the moon.
And stars and a couple of suns.
No, I'll leave the stars alone.
Um, next, next time I have it unprotected, I.
Okay, that's fine.
I can recheck.
So if we started at, maybe if we start at the right and just move our way over to the.
Okay.
Town buildings one, maybe?
So. Um, we're not gonna look at.
Just.
Extras.
Like revaluation.
Okay.
Those look good.
So. We just paid thirty-two, well. We just paid thirty-two, wow, that was with the discount, it was really forty, but that was not a very good number anyways. But you put in fifty, so.
I put in fifty, because.
Right.
Yep.
We had forty-nine thousand and fifty thousand were the two middle, and thirty-nine was the one we went with. And seventy-five was the high, so.
Okay, sounds good.
Didn't use the low, lowest price there.
Okay.
You both are comfortable with that?
Yep.
Okay, so let's check that one off and move on to the next.
Okay.
Do you have to put an AR next?
Just go in sequence and then remove.
Okay, so, on this one, we have a, I have a piece of information missing. Selectman Bugbee sent me some files yesterday, and I did look at them today, and it looks like the information is there, and you're right, there is a lot of pick and shovel work to get it out of those files.
Yep, yep.
But, because one of the, the things that I've been uncertain about is at what rate should this increase?
Right.
This is an expense that, that varies tremendously from year to year. I have the last fifteen or sixteen year history of it. We've had years when it was, we paid out zero. I know there was a year when it was forty-nine thousand, another year it was in the thirties, and maybe it's even been higher. So this fifteen thousand is the average.
That wouldn't happen again because of the change in contracts, right? You wouldn't have anyone that had, unless.
Wouldn't have those kind of spikes. So, but one of the, the questions I've had is, at what rate should this, what should the increase rate be that we're gonna use? It, it of course is just a predictor, it's not, it's not saying, it's gonna go nice and smoothly like this. And my way of finding that was from the information I got from Selectman Bugbee, have a data point in two thousand and ten with what was the total of, well, I don't have the total yet.
I can give you the total.
Two thousand and ten?
For calendar year, and this may cause problems for you because the, it's the easiest to pull the wa-, wages.
Wages and salaries without.
Calendar ones?
Calendar-wise than it is because that's how we pay taxes and.
That's, that's fine, if, if we can get.
But actually, I, I don't, I have the total wages.
What I was looking for was wages and salaries without benefits.
Right, okay, so total wages were one million, three nine nine, seven six six dot three six for two thousand and ten.
The other thing that, I don't know, you get it to, get it to Andy is the email in terms of how much we've spent in FY twenty-two so far. Because John needs to update his spreadsheet because that was a significant amount.
I think I have those numbers too.
If you can give it to him.
For twenty twenty, the total wages were two million, zero, zero, six, 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 three, point, five, eight.
Okay.
And, actually, I don't have the totals for present year. I have the totals for accrued liabilities to date.
Yeah, that's the thirty-four, but how much have we spent? 'Cause you haven't asked for reimbursement of the trustees, the trust funds out of this fund yet. So.
I can give that to you, John, though.
He needs to know what that number is.
So, so with, with the two numbers you just gave me, I can do the arithmetic and come up with, what's a reasonable number to use for annual increase? Because the annual increase you'd expect is both the increase in the number of employees we have and the increase of their individual salaries or wages. The other number that is for a board decision is how much do you wanna keep in that fund? When you're planning to buy a fire truck, you wanna have a little bit more money than the fire truck is gonna cost, but you know it's not gonna be doubled. But here, you could easily have a year when it's two or three times the average, and then another year when it's zero. So, this is a mechanism up here where right now it's set to thirty thousand. So it won't let the year-ending amount be less than thirty thousand. But that number is, was based on an idea of what a, well, it just came from my previous wild guess.
Well, the, the total liability at the moment is just under thirty-five thousand, total.
And that would be if everybody left.
If everybody left, that's how much it would be.
So, so thirty thousand may be much more than you.
I would think so, yes.
'Cause you could use the unassigned.
You could, but, yeah. Either way, you have to pay it, so.
You'd be in more trouble anyhow if everybody left.
Yeah, I feel that way. So you can make that half that, that wouldn't be okay?
So, so that's a question.
I was thinking ten, myself.
Yeah, that sounds good.
I was thinking ten, John. And the thing is, your numbers are gonna change up there when Andy gives you how much the withdrawals are for, 'cause you've got fifteen, four fifty, it's way more than that, so.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so.
Answers for this year.
So, so.
That's the, that would be the last big draw.
Right, and then it'll be smaller after that.
Okay.
Doesn't that change the thirty over there or not? No?
So, so, this percentage here is, you can, you can set the year imbalance to be at least some fraction of the amount spent that year. This makes far more sense when you're talking about buying fire trucks or cloud trucks.
Yeah.
So you can set it to be a percentage of the amount spent that year with the not to exceed amount and a not to be below amount.
Now you're balanced.
And, but, but right now, if I set this to zero, then it's always gonna go to ten thousand. And you can see here, it's figuring, I gotta keep at least ten thousand, gotta keep at least ten thousand.
Is that actually gonna go up?
All right. All right, you good with that one?
I, I missed a comment that.
Does that make, doesn't that actually make the amount deposited go up? If I give ten, wasn't, wasn't it less?
If this was thirty thousand?
What, I don't know, was that?
It went down?
It went down.
So that's eighteen.
I just don't remember.
The thing is, it's gonna go back up again because that withdrawal amount.
But it's gonna go, yeah, so this, this number here of what's gonna be spent this fiscal year is radically different from that, fifteen thousand.
Sorry, I just didn't remember seeing those numbers.
So, when the town administrator gives me that number, I can put in, I can update this number.
Yep.
With the other numbers you gave me, I can come up with a better estimate for this. And then, if you're settled on ten thousand being the minimum, once I make that as zero, this is a material.
We're done.
I guess to make it obvious how it works, I could put it in as ten thousand, but it doesn't change anything.
And Andy's gonna give you a different number for withdrawals for two thousand and twenty-two?
Great.
Yes.
Great.
Okay, next.
So, land acquisition, the only thing that's listed in here is a, is kind of a dummy placeholder that just gets moved forward every year. Purchase conservation easement, two hundred thousand dollars. There are things that have been talked about. You don't want to make this number, what you think it might actually cost for something you might be considering 'cause you don't really know. So this is just a, a dummy placeholder.
Yeah, the only thing that they're looking at at the moment is that there's a property on the library, on York Lane. That's the only thing they're looking at.
This is, this is a number that the trustees, the trust funds use. We're just making something that every year are gonna have at least two hundred thousand dollars, just in case.
Great. I think for now, that's fine with everything else that's going on.
So that's what's there. Are we okay?
Got more?
Just gonna go through a few more to get them tightened up so we can have it down to the last bit.
So, recreation, I haven't heard anything from them.
They're meeting tomorrow night to make final decisions, 'cause I guess things weren't voted on properly.
Right. So, so what's here is just what was in the CIP from last year?
Disgust, yeah.
So if you can update John in terms of what their processes are?
Absolutely. I'll write a note to myself.
No concern?
Nope, just yourself.
All right. So, next one, library.
Okay, so library, we have, maybe we look at the library building one first?
Okay.
So, library building, the library trustees were given both of these worksheets, or printouts from them, for library building and for the library capital reserve fund. You remember the library building, Lee Library Building Capital Reserve Fund is the one that came from when it was the library. Over at Breaker.
Yep.
And their response was, this looked fine, they'd update when they had more information. So the twenty twenty-two, this year, this was just a guess I had put in of a hundred thousand dollars that I put in quite a while ago. And then in twenty twenty-three, in here, is a formula that uses up the rest of the money. So it looks at how much is left, it looks at what interest you're earning on what's there, it looks at these cost annual increases, and it calculates what number should go in there to use up the money, all the money in the fund and end up with zero.
So there's no savings for the library, but that would be a warrant, that would be a warrant article.
To do what?
For the rest of the money to build, to work on the addition, because there's no savings going in.
This one, Lee Library Building, the SLIPWAD is the agent to expend.
Right.
It'd have to be a warrant article to close the fund.
Yes.
Drawing all the money out, we can do that.
Yes, drawing all the money out does not actually close a fund.
But there's no, but, but in this particular thing, you haven't put anything in for saving towards anything?
Deposits, no.
Deposits, okay.
The other fund, library fund, is the much older library capital reserve fund. And that's the one where there was warrant article, article seven, to expend one hundred thousand dollars from that for renovation and addition to the library. So that's entered at a hundred thousand dollars, and the rest of these line items are just what was in the CIP with no consideration as to what up here is actually part of this.
Okay.
And the other fund too?
Or the other, correct.
So are they getting back to you in terms of how they want to reconfigure these, like one through five?
The only thing that I've heard is, this looks fine. I, I'm paraphrasing, I don't remember the exact words, but this looks fine. And when they have more information, they tell me about it. And everything, by, for estimate, estimate type, everything should be listed as an educated guess.
Okay, thank you.
On a related note, I did meet the new librarian last week.
Oh, great.
I believe she's slated, her name is Heidi Van Ghee or Van Gill, and I believe she is slated to start on January fourth.
Great, that's exciting.
Very, very nice young lady. Very distinctive accent.
That's awesome.
And since you have the PAF for her, right? She's within budget?
I have not actually seen the personal action notice yet.
So when you do, could you let us know?
I certainly could.
That would be good, okay. So, and also, I assume the trustees aren't gonna let them draw down thirteen thousand negative, right? So, they cannot expand that much.
We do not write checks for what's not in the bank.
Right.
All right. So I guess the other thing is in terms of for planning purposes, two thousand and twenty-three, they want forty thousand dollars? I don't remember them asking for that.
That's, that's just the circulation days.
That's, if you were to do all these things on this schedule, which is.
Yeah. So that's a plug number?
Right, correct, that's.
Yeah, that's, that's, are you gonna do Sheldon replacement this year?
Right, we don't know. Okay, so we'll get that there.
All right, all right. All right, transfer station?
Transfer station. Okay, so transfer station, a big jump here. Of course, with all of these, a significant reason for the jump is that we are now accounting for annual cost increases.
Correct.
We're also using a very realistic and conservative number for the interest that we're gonna earn.
And we added items that weren't on this originally, they weren't on.
And there are added items, and a big one on the transfer station is the roll-off truck.
Yep.
For a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars is the transfer station's ninety percent portion of it. And that, of course, was not being planned for previously.
Correct.
So that's a, a big part of this large jump here.
So, I went to stop and see this town administrator on Friday, but he skipped out before I showed up. So, yeah, I mean, he's never there. One of the questions I asked his capable assistant was this particular issue. So, the plan was to purchase this particular vehicle out of those two funds, transfer station and the highway department, percentage-wise. But we are going to pay that back over a period of five years. So, something needs to be worked into this where it shows that additional amount going back into that particular fund for five years?
And we would do that via a warrant article, I'm assuming that.
I, I don't know, that's, that's the question I had, because I, I don't know.
You already bought it, though.
Yeah, but we need to pay back the fund, so that's really, is that really an operated expense?
To my.
That was my question, so, so.
To my mind, the simplest and cleanest way would be to have a warrant article to, to re, you know, fund the CRF.
So what if the, the voter's saying no?
But that's not gonna work, 'cause you've already bought the truck, it happens to be something in the future that you're replacing the money for.
Right, but you, you're using a capital reserve fund, two capital reserve funds to purchase the truck, and you would just replenish the capital reserve funds with annual contributions that you stipulate a warrant article to replenish?
I think we'll look at it as a profit center. How much revenue is they pulling each year versus how much, how much cost do you?
Yeah, that'll be great, yeah, that'll be great, but until then, we can at least.
So, so as things are right now, that seventy-seven, call it seventy-eight thousand is leveled out to twenty thirty.
Okay.
But there's a place for, if you wanna pay that back earlier, then you put in a deposit override and you can make the case to the voters, if by having the truck, we now, you now have taken out that cost from your budget where you were paying the trucking company, and it's saving you whatever it is per year. You can override this number and, you know, make that eighty thousand or whatever you want.
Revenue will come in.
Yeah, so how much would it be without the truck? How much would we have to put in? And then I would want to augment it for those five years of that, whatever that one-fifth of the total cost of the truck is.
So.
So let's say we took out the one sixty-eight.
If we just X here, we take out the one sixty-eight.
Yep.
So. So, truck doesn't, no, goes down. It's still up from a previous year, but it's down from what was practically seventy-eight thousand.
Exactly.
So let's say it's fifty-seven thousand, what is the total price of the truck? One eighty, what was it?
I think one eighty-five, something?
Yeah, well, the one sixty-eight was the ninety percent.
Can you click on roll-off under link, 'cause it should tell you, right?
Yeah, the total, one eighty-five.
One eighty-five, nine eighty-nine.
What's twenty percent of one eighty-five, whatever?
Well, ten percent is eighteen-six.
Thirty-six, thirty-seven thousand. So if we put in override, fifty-seven plus thirty-seven would be ninety-two. For five years.
It can be ninety-two, ninety-four.
What?
You said thirty-seven plus fifty-seven would be ninety-two.
Yeah, isn't it?
Seven, seven, four.
Ninety-four, ninety-four, ninety-four. Mister, Mister Brown.
Thank you.
He's running the ball.
He's like a human calculator.
Ninety-four for four years, uh, four more years. A little bit more, another order of magnitude, Mister Brown.
One more zero, if only, though.
I'm glad, John, you're not in the finance department because we'd probably fire you in the first day.
Oh, stop, one number, what's?
Hey, that makes a big difference, we had a individual that worked for the town that did that and screwed us over for years. Yeah.
So with four years, you then got it down to lower than what we were putting in previously.
All right. So if you put it, no, five, one more year. Alright, so if you put, no, five, one more year, you need another ninety-four. There you go, alright, there you go.
So you're then down to thirty-four thousand.
But we'll come up with more things, we need them, sure, so.
Well, I guess it gives you an idea of what you need to be putting away to brick and fence. Cause right now, he's showing a line on him in the operating budget. Instead of the thirty-some thousand, he's showing only showing three, that's what he needs, right?
Great, thank you.
So if we can save that particular part?
We just did the ponds and the fire and the ponds, we're gonna change it.
Well, you gotta put the one sixty-eight back.
So.
Yep.
Can't find it to leave here. There it is.
Is that a period?
Let it go.
Oh.
It is.
Oh, oh, not functional.
Cancel.
It's just being.
Oh, I can't click the link, never mind.
I'll give you a copy?
Yeah. Once you put something in, that's what it is, huh?
No, um, I can't find things on this keyboard, sorry, this is unbelievable.
No worries.
Well, write it down, you can fix it after this, and we can go on to ponds and cisterns.
Which we did do. That's nice, cause we get up to, like, the prime, and we'll deal with it later, at least you know all that's.
That was my thought, cause that's gonna be the worst.
Cause our brains are needing to not have all the extra what ifs, plus it'll help the A B C.
Yes.
Right, cause they'll have the final information.
No scars, there you go, yay! Alright, excellent, excellent, alright, next one.
So, ponds and cisterns, so now, um, we pointed out here that, uh, this timing, which is, you know, stretched out three years, three years, three years. It really is this last item, it's a sum of getting to that last item that controls how much you have to set aside.
Do you wanna adjust those back to different years, that that's all set?
And, so this is where, um, my take on it, from what I heard the fire chief say, um, is if you have a cistern that they, that needs repair, and because it needs repair, they're having to go and refill it to top it up periodically, you ought to save the time by getting it fixed soon.
Well, can we at least change number two to two thousand twenty-three?
There we go.
Cause then I can start the rumor that, uh, certain residents on that road pressured us into changing that.
Which literally, there, according to that, never happened once, so it wouldn't be a problem. Cause we love our, we call it the Dylan ponds, we don't mind it, it's all good there.
Alright, we okay with this one?
So that would move up, right, three years?
Well, I think that would work. These could move up quite a bit, so.
Yes, under time, we're gonna have it earlier date.
Well, it depends on what else you're doing there.
Well, it's gonna show us where it would move, cause he asked me at that point, you need that much money.
Yeah, you need a hundred and seventeen thousand.
So, two thousand twenty-six.
Twenty twenty-six, you've got more than you need.
Perfect. See? There we go.
And this one, you need a hundred and twenty-four thousand.
Oh, next one.
It's probably gonna be twenty thirty.
Yep.
Two years.
Now you have to move.
A little further out.
You need to have one thirty-one ninety, one thirty-two, basically.
Let's further.
Past twenty thirty, when you get back up to one thirty-two, so in twenty thirty-four, so a year earlier.
A year.
And then that one has to stay, right?
Yeah.
Correct, if, if we bring this one in, then these prices, these, uh, amount you have to set aside is gonna go up.
Great.
Can you scroll back to two thousand twenty-three? Was it K or whatever, yeah. Alright, so we know just a little bit, cause it was twenty-nine.
Correct, it, this change, what it got you was, you get that, those facilities sooner.
Right.
And it looks like you saved a tiny bit of money.
It does not mean the interest for doing it later.
Correct, so, so, but the real reason for doing it is, if you need those facilities
Right.
and you have the money,
Yes.
it doesn't cost you actually to do them sooner.
Probably that's maybe broken, you can.
That's absolutely, it was my moving band, absolutely, alright, fire comment? It's a good thing they can't hear me very well, according to everyone, I'm just trying, right? I'm alright.
So I like the chief's idea in terms of combining shiny, shiny things, so that's good. Hey, I'm a layperson, I think it costs expensive, cause it's shiny.
I'm gonna combine shiny things, that's what the chief said.
Expensive shiny things.
Right, so we agreed with all of these things.
Yes, we're good with all this?
There's nothing we could take out?
I don't think so, I was okay with it.
I was okay too.
So, what you haven't done, um, and it, and it's just a detail, I expect that you would do, use an override on every one of these, because you're not gonna do a warrant article for two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and four.
Yeah.
You're gonna say, well, when I look at the time value of money, this could really escalate a little bit, so I'm gonna do two twenty-five this year. Or something like that.
The other thing that's missing out of here, John, is the six fifty is gonna be really minus the deposit for the
Right.
the turn-in, which could potentially be fifty thousand, um, so, yeah.
That's small change.
Yeah, it's also, it's also probably gonna go up a little bit, because, um, historically, when the trucks have come in, they've then added some equipment to them, which got counted as part of the truck, cause it was truck with accessories.
But I don't wanna change any of this at the moment, but I think that's gonna be down just a little bit, but.
So are you saying you could do a warrant, a warrant article for, like, you're saying you would smooth it out to a normal number, and then that we, we just put every year for fire?
Well, next year, we determine what it would be.
Bless you.
The way I would look at this is, um, instead of doing a uniform series of two twenty-eight, two oh-four every year for however many years that is, I would do a series that, that considers the time value of money, and I'd be doing, say, two twenty here and two twenty-five, or, you know, a little slow escalation.
Okay.
Maybe it's two, maybe if you like things that are multiples of five thousand, maybe you're gonna do two twenty, two twenty, two twenty, two twenty-five, two twenty-five, two twenty-five, and so forth. Two thirty, two thirty, two thirty-five, two thirty-five.
So we can work on that with the details later, okay.
Right.
Perfect.
And, and that's probably down in the noise, because next year, they're gonna have a new quote on something here, and it's gonna change.
Right.
Alright, we good with this tab?
Yep, we're good.
Road bridge. And the Chesley Brook, you'll get an updated how much we're gonna expend out of here, so that's gonna tweak that a little bit.
Yep.
Yeah, I have that note, um, so that's expected to go down significantly.
Yeah.
And these are our percentages, we think, right, this is not the total cost of the, correct, I think I asked that before.
Uh, like for the bridges?
Yeah, those are, that's our.
Yes, but they are.
Justin Brook, definitely.
These bridges at three hundred thousand, um, that's a very, very, it's an educated guess.
Okay, alright.
And it's, and it's based on what it costs to do a high road bridge.
Yeah.
Great, okay.
But.
We'll see when the time comes and what.
Each of these bridges is not the same.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
Alright, good with that, are we good with that one?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Next, next please.
That one is a big increase.
If we can get up to just these last few, that'd be great, and we'll do this on a day. We already went through all these. It's funny how many there are, and what a small amount compared to other units.
Well, we have to do the same thing here with the, the truck payment, too.
Uh, yeah, well, it's only, it's less than eighteen thousand.
Yeah.
This went up, not really because of the roll-off truck.
Yeah.
Uh, this went up because of, considering the annual increase, um, and there were items added. A, a lot of these things down in here were added.
Okay.
Are we good with all these things that he's potentially?
I remember going through this before.
Okay, we're good?
Things changed, right, yeah.
Alright, so we're gonna get a blip, about twenty-five thousand extra, maybe? Alright, alright.
Everything's done, okay.
I think I'm feeling ill, I don't wanna go to the next tab.
Yeah, so those we'll save for another fun-filled, exciting day?
Well, we can take a peek.
Alright.
But, just to peek.
Almost six thirty.
Just to peek, we're just peeking a little bit.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, here, one of the things that was added, um, there previously was an item for, um, P S C energy improvements. And that has now, um, been split into, there's two things. From the Energy Committee, the only energy improvements that they were considering was insulation
Yep.
and air sealing, um, and they went out and got a quote.
Oh, great.
And, uh, so there's two line items here, uh, their quote had, um, some money from the Hamster Electric Cooperative. I think it was like a twenty-five percent. Hamster Electric Cooperative would pay twenty-five percent of the cost.
That's excellent.
Except from what I saw in the news, I think that's all canceled.
I don't know for sure, but I believe you're right.
Yeah.
That's not gonna happen.
Yeah, um, in fact, on the news, I saw the, one of the, um, principals in the company that provided the quote talking about the problem with canceling this program.
Oh, wow.
So the numbers that I've entered are without the subsidy, without the twenty-five percent, so it's the, it's the, it's the maximum you could possibly pay. If that program was actually canceled, you would pay a little bit less than this, because built into this for each of them was, in order to get, um, the rebate, you would have to do a study which shows that it saves energy, and it has to be saved as some certain amount of energy or percentage or something.
So there's a cost for that?
And there was a cost for doing that engineering analysis, which was fifteen hundred dollars. So this is an absolute worst case, which is, if the program was still in place, and you paid the fifteen hundred dollars for the analysis, and then you were rejected, you didn't get it.
Right.
This is the whole thing, what it costs to do the work, plus the engineering analysis, and with no.
The ventilation system is something we're thinking about using arcathens for, so that would come out.
So, this, this is insulating and air sealing.
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at the.
On the next.
Oh.
Can you, so, I think, I don't wanna put words in the other two select people's mouths, but I think we're good with all those other tabs?
Yep.
There's nothing in there that you wanna remove or think we should?
Correct, I think all those are done.
So, which means, and we can't afford a million, whatever it is.
No.
So, would it be possible, John, for you to print out those, or how many items they are, and send that to the select board and town administrator, too?
That'd be great.
And then we can go through them individually and see the ones that you want, because we're gonna have to cough.
You send them to the.
I'll go along with that. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, that way we can get that done, and then put together, see what we all come up with.
Yep, so, maybe we can.
Cause we can't do that number.
Yes, yes, I, 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 so if you can send that out to us, John, and send it to Andy, too?
Or if you send it to me, I can send it to the board now.
I mean, normally, for things like that, I would send it to Andy.
That's fine, that's true, just ultimately, the three of us need to have it, so if we can go through that, and you do wanna set up another meeting, so we can deal with all those?
Well, I think we, uh, once we get that, it's gonna take a little while to digest, I think, but yeah, we should set up another meeting that kind of
Yep.
finalizes it.
But how soon for budgeting purposes do we need to have it done?
Well, the A B C is meeting tomorrow night, so you're not gonna have it by then.
You're late for that.
So they're doing a presentation on the thirteenth, so they're gonna have to, like, wing it, we've already talked about that.
Yeah, we're getting a lot of wing-ups.
Have a large open space for buildings, everything else is done.
So, do we want to get together when? We meet on the thirteenth regularly, do you wanna meet on maybe the fifteenth?
That would work with me.
The what? The fifteenth is a Wednesday?
Should be okay.
Are you okay with that, John? Is there something happening on the fifteenth, three?
Fifteenth?
Yeah.
Is it Wednesday?
Yeah. Is that a good day or a bad day, or?
How about Andy?
That's right, today's not a Wednesday.
Yes, today's not a.
That's fine.
Yes, are you okay, Andy? So let's do fifteenth at five o'clock again?
Sounds good.
That's a good time.
This is a big day, you guys.
Can you post that for us, of course?
Yep.
This is, we've been waiting a long time to do this.
Yeah.